Call this special board meeting of Southwest Licking Local School District to order. It is 4:31 PM in the Board of Education meeting room. I will read the meeting notice as required. Pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 12122 and 3313.16, notice is hereby given at a special meeting of the Southwest Licking Local School District Board of Education Fairfield and Licking Counties, Ohio is scheduled to be held on Wednesday, March 30th, 2022 at 4:30 PM. The meeting will be held in the Southwest Licking School District Board Meeting Room, 927B South Street, Pataskoala, Ohio. The purpose of this meeting will be personnel consent calendar to award the contract for tennis courts and softball fields project, including alternates and the location of graduation. Individual board members may attend in person or by means of teleconference, video conference, or other similar electronic technology. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person in compliance with all current health and safety protocols, or observe it electronically by accessing the link to the live broadcast. Oh, I gotta go back to the agenda. Hold on. I'd like to recognize our visitors, both in the room and online. If everyone could please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jones, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Engel.
Here.
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Zani.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here. We have a quorum, we can continue. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second. Mr. Jones.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes. Item number two, request to speak on agenda items, either the Teamsters Local 413 or Southwest Licking Education Association. Seeing no one, I will go on to item three, personnel consent calendar. Need a motion to approve all or one or... Second. Any discussion?
No.
Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes. That passes. Item four A, tennis courts and softball fields. Says motion to award contract to... Do you want me to read this?
If you want to, well, they can read either one, but...
Or do we just wanna go reading the motion first?
Yeah, discussion, yeah.
Motion four A approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Who's probably gonna go first?
Eric, Eric, or Shear, any of those that are here that answer any questions you have, so this is the base bid. We received three bids. Gar Miller spoke to all three of them, qualified their bids, make sure they understood the scope. Based on their recommendation, they recommended we go with Alfred Incorporated in the future. Alfred actually wants to do some of our K3, so we might see that name again in the future. So we're asking the board to approve the base bid, which was $2,697, it's not listed there, and the five alternates, which for a total of $2,737. With these five together, they were the lowest bidder. And then basically, glad you're answering any questions you have, by all.
So what are we getting for this 2. almost $7 million?
Shear, Kurt? Bueller?
This is Kurt.
Hi, Kurt.
So, John, to answer your question, we're getting tennis courts, we're getting a drive and a parking lot, we're getting a junior varsity softball field, a varsity softball field, and we also bid as an alternate a baseball field, which we are not accepting at this time, but we're getting scoreboards, fencing, seeding, infield mix, baseball, or I'm sorry, softball bases, and all the electric power and all that goes with that. So it's quite an extensive project, and I can share drawings with you if you would like to see them.
Can I ask a follow-up question while you're pulling up those design documents?
Sure.
Does that include dugouts for the softball field? Was that an alternate?
Both softball field... Hi, this is Shear Elder with Garman Miller. It does the softball fields. The JV field gets prefab metal dugouts. The varsity field will get masonry.
Okay. And then, does it also include the leveling for a future site for the baseball fields?
Yes, it does. It includes the grading of that field and seeding of that field for temporary stabilization.
Okay, thank you.
Shear, Kurt?
And the, I'm sorry, the electric and power...
Yeah, give me just a second.
The electric and power infrastructure will also be extended to the future baseball area as well?
We'll be close. I mean, the main power is right at the softball field, so it'll just be running through there.
Correct.
It'll be close, yeah.
Six.
And plumbing, the two, I assume?
Some plumbing, yeah, not a ton, but there's some, will be some coming for future for dugouts and stuff.
What's the projection for this project? This summer or will be next year before it's done?
The tennis courts are required to be done by July 31st.
Okay.
They have until October 31st to complete the softball fields.
Okay, good.
Are you able to share, Kurt?
So the softball fields will be functional next year?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So they have a good growing season, right, Bob?
Yeah, well, the grass will be...
Okay. Okay.
Can you see my screen?
You can see as well.
Yes.
With the speed shift.
I can see it.
Okay.
So this is Route 40, if you can see my cursor across the bottom of the drawing. And then this is Warrior Way. And then the high school is off the side of this drawing, but it's located over here. So where the, one of the drives for the high school parking lot directly across from that is the new drive, and then parking. And then these are the six tennis courts. And then this field is the junior varsity softball field. And then right next to it is the varsity softball field. And then just a little bit to the east then is the varsity baseball field.
And the softball fields will then have a dugout?
Yes, they'll all, yeah, along well. So like you said, the varsity will have metal, will have basically cement block, and then the JV will have a metal prefab dugouts.
Who's talking?
There is an alternate to do that. We chose not to do it, because like $47,000 just to go from CNU to, so, for the JV.
Rick, can you see who's talking on there? Can they mute themselves?
Whoever's talking, other than Kurt, could you please mute?
There we go.
Oh, it's in my Kurt's office, sorry. So that's basically your base bid. There's altern for, we'll be taking up that option in the near future, but at this point...
People are saying they're having a hard time hearing at home.
Well, that's because of all the people calling in remote. I'm sure it'll...
Okay.
At this time, there's also not a press box for softball. That's something we will address when we do that.
I thought you just said they were press boxes for softball.
No, there's not.
Dugouts, not press box.
Dugouts, not press box.
Oh, dugouts, not press box.
And scoreboards, yes.
And scoreboards. There was two alternates for it. One was a one right beside it for about $70,000, and the two-story one was about $132, $200. So again, we wanted to actually do that two-story, so we're at sea, we're gonna try to do it through a different method.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's important to note that in the coming months, we'll be coming back, hopefully, with some new plans for the parts that we can't, that are, we're over the estimates that we anticipated.
Okay.
Yes. So we're not done yet.
Yeah, we're not done, yes.
This is the beginning, let's them get going, get to ground level, which is the biggest part of it.
Do we anticipate how many months it'll be before we have that figured out?
Not a couple.
I hope, and do it the most, ideally April.
Okay. So we aren't talking six months out?
No, 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 no.
We're talking some...
Yes.
Very quickly. So anything else you need Kurt to talk or share? Anything more specific?
Sounds exciting.
Twelve-foot fences around three, four sides of the tennis courts. It's exciting, yes, it's very exciting, because the tennis courts is the main thing getting done by July 31st. And all three of them said, more, Alfred said they can get it done.
Yeah, the timeline was aggressive, so that's what turned a few people away from bidding, because it is an aggressive timeline, but our tennis courts are falling apart, have been, so...
And will there be, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm...
Will there be any illumination with this?
Shear, will you talk about where the lights would be, please?
Yes. Kurt, do you remember, there was two along the drive aisle and then two along the parking spaces as well?
Okay.
We are stubbed out for the remainder to be, they are conduit for now, and can be added in the future to actually light the tennis courts and possibly later the baseball field. But currently, it's just lighting the roadway.
Okay.
All that big long, which is piping, they put it underground to get water away.
Do you see what's going on? Are we able to accommodate the supply surfaces?
Yeah, I think so, because all those little dotted lines to the fields, that's drainage tiles.
Okay.
And the varsity, right now, being in high school, but in the middle of school, those are all drainage tiles, those big black pipes, drains pipes away. There's, Shear, you talk about the drainage real quick, please?
Yes, currently, coming across Warrior Way, there is a drainage pipe that ends in a head wall, right around the tennis courts. About the third tennis court down is where it currently is. We are picking that up ahead of that and taking it up to the detention basin. Then we are capturing water as it goes around both the baseball field and the softball, junior varsity field, and sending water to the head walls on the other side of the baseball field, you can see it, I believe that's head wall four. And then there's another, yeah, right there, so that's water coming from Route 40. And then the, there's stub out into the detention basin, which is being expanded. There's two head walls that will end there to carry stormwater.
We're open with all that, yes, drainage will be good.
And those are very large pipes. We are catching water coming across 40 from ODOT. So that was a requirement that we had to, you know, size our pipes for those.
Do we still have to do the archaeological stuff and all that?
That's already been done.
All done.
Yeah, I didn't find anything.
We shall never speak of that again.
Well, if you get to write company, it was not a big, yes, the company did phase two, did phase one this time, and it was good. So we got all the permits that rights here? Do we have nationwide permit and all that stuff?
Yes, we do. We have our nationwide permit.
Yeah, so...
And we brought that up with the bidders. They're aware that they have to keep that in their trailer, and that there are requirements about staying within bounds for those.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes. That motion passes, four B.
Eric, can Alex go home now?
Yes, he can.
He just ran out the door. I've never seen a man move so fast.
Thank you.
Bob was right behind him.
Can Bob go home too? Yeah.
So you guys, Kurt, congratulations, if you want to. Thank you for joining us and helping us out.
Yeah, thank you both.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt.
Shear. Everybody. Kurt's friends. Kurt's office friends. All right, item four B, the location of graduation. We need a motion?
Right now, there is no motion, so we would have to...
I can probably talk first if you want.
Okay.
Okay, it's our favorite topic, graduation. So a lot has evolved since the fall, when we initially had conversations about graduation and landed on the decision to have it in the high school. Most recently, one of the events that led up to, you know, this conversation coming back up was we hosted a playoff game at the high school. And so the capacity, and there is some definite misinformation regarding gym capacity, but the capacity of the gym is 2,000. Now, with that being said, I am not sure quite their measurements of how they put in their 2,000 people, but that is the capacity it was built for. With the understanding that, you know, we will lose a full side of the gym, you know, our old gym in the old high school didn't have the ends like that. So we'll lose a side where we have to put, you know, graduates and band and all that kind of stuff. So when we had the playoff game, I would say, if I recall correctly, there was around 1,000 playoff tickets sold, and it was pretty packed. Could you fit more people? Absolutely. I would say a couple hundred, I think that's the best estimate of both the, you know, myself and the athletic director. But to me, in seeing that experience and that, it became evident that it's going to be very tight in our gym. And to be able to do graduation the best way for our kids, which to me means including the band and the choir and some of those things that are, you know, part of graduation, I'm not sure the gym is the best solution to have graduation at this time. So I feel like, you know, it's April, basically, this week, so we're not at a point where other options are on the table, so I feel like what, where we're kind of at is bringing it back to talking about the stadium. The stadium, you know, there are pros and cons, I definitely want to outline those so everyone is fully aware of what the conversations we've been having with the high school team. You know, the stadium will allow for, you know, four tickets like we did last year for families. It will, so more people will be able to attend, it will obviously have more room. The negatives or the things for people to understand are that we're not attached anymore to the high school. So as far as set up and tear down, that's something that we do ourselves as a district. You know, people want to compare us to Ohio State, we're not Ohio State. We don't have the caliber of people, the manpower, or, you know, just the pure mechanisms of all they have involved for the graduation. So yes, it can be done, and it will be very nice, but understanding that there are some complexities that we're not attached anymore to the high school. It's not as simple, well, it wasn't simple before, they'd probably be very angry with me, the staff for saying that, but it was at least manageable with the two buildings and bringing out the stages and building everything. So if the board elects to discuss the possibility of going back from the gym to the stadium, I think we have to have a very serious conversation about the consideration, in my opinion, of not doing a rain date because of the setup and/or the determination of how we're going to decide when to move graduation into the gym if we are gonna have bad weather. So I think those are two variables. When I spoke with the high school team, that was their largest concern, is setting up in two separate places and not being connected anymore. They're just, it's just unfortunate reality. So I felt after that playoff game that, you know, it's my due diligence to bring these things to you. Another, I don't know if it's a concern, but just something to keep in mind, we're investigating, we have some preliminary parking numbers. You know, right now, obviously, with the current, the old high school, all the work being done, we've lost parking, significant parking. We do believe we're gonna be able to maintain the parking where the buses typically park in the front of the high school. We're not completely confident about that yet, but we're fairly confident. And so we're probably gonna have to do something, we're gonna have to get creative, you know, a parking pass per family, you know, graduates will have to be dropped off. We would look at using, reaching out to church across the street to see if they would allow us to use that like as an overflow lot for maybe people that weren't able to, you know, carpool. But parking's definitely going to be different than it has in the past. So that's something as well, but we can do it, it just might look differently than it has been. So I wanted to bring it back up, have a conversation or a discussion, see what everybody thought regarding the matter, and kind of go from there. I mean, we are, it is almost April, so we have to make a decision. It's not something that we can carry on, unfortunately, to the April board meeting, we're just gonna have to, you know, make a final decision and live with it at this point. So there you go. I don't know who wants to go first, who wants to talk about something.
I just think in lieu of what you described with the basketball game and whatnot, I think that that's probably the road that we should be going down, and I'd be supportive of that. So do you want a motion?
I like your attitude, if it can be done, we can do it. And I think it can be done, and I think it will help a lot of people to come to a graduation that everyone wants to attend. And the more we can do to help that, the better off we are, so. And I've seen a lot of people say they'll volunteer to help set up and tear down, and I think we should grab those people and have them there to help with all that, too, so...
Okay, thank you, Roger.
Yeah, I think it's because the actual board passed a motion to put it at the gym, at the high school, so we probably would need a motion to change that.
Can I ask a couple?
Sure, please.
Questions, not really questions. Some of these things that you said we should talk about, and do you want that to happen now, or maybe communications subcommittee slash building in gra...
I don't... Well, I mean, I guess I would say to you, I'll just go ahead and give you my recommendation, and then you guys can take that and decide to go with it however you may. I feel like it would be the best interest to, we have our graduation date picked, we have our time picked. If the board wants to go with having it at the stadium, we have it at the stadium, and pretty much rain or shine. Now, obviously, not a torrential downpour, we're gonna have to watch the weather, and if the weather is inclement enough where it could be harmful to people, that's a bad idea. At which point, then, like previous years, we moved it to the gym. And I really feel like that was the largest concern that I heard from when speaking to the high school staff. You know, they're like, we'll do whatever, we're team players, we wanna, we want this to be the best for kids, but that was their largest concern. So I would say we go with how we did it previously. We have our date, we're gonna have graduation that date, we're gonna hope it's on the football field unless the weather is so bad that we have to move it indoors. That would be my recommendation.
No rain date would be predetermined time in which we decide the weather is, like, making a call.
Yeah, I think that...
At a preset time.
I think that complicates things to have a rain date. I think that complicates things. I think we're gonna...
I meant making a decision to move...
I mean, we'd have to watch the weather.
Yeah. I guess what I'm saying is we can't make a decision at 8:00 AM at a 9 o'clock graduation to move, is what I'm saying is...
Okay, I'm sorry.
We would say, okay, by Friday at blah time, we would be making the call, and unfortunately, if it ends up being nice the next day, we can't move it back.
No, we would have to make the call. I mean, I think 48 hours would be ideal, but at the latest Friday morning, because they're gonna use all day Friday to set up. I mean, they have to build a stage. Actually, I probably need to ask Kevin how long it took them to build that stage last year. I don't effectively know that, so I, based on how long it takes to build the stage, if it can be done in one day, which I feel like it was, but I need to make sure on that, then I would say, you know, 24 hours. You know, 48 would give a little bit more wiggle room. I mean, we're gonna have chairs dropped off by companies, those sort of things as well. Just running through logistics in my head.
And then my other question, or would be, can we talk about, can you please explain to those listening at home mainly, why we cannot put the stage in the end zone?
Yes.
To allow visitors on both sides?
Yes. So, you know, we could try it, but what the sound companies are telling us is they're not sure that you're going to hear from both ends all the way down, the whole stadium, like the stadium. So that would not be their recommendation, and I would think would be more tragic than anything, would be to be at graduation and to not hear your graduate announced. So I don't feel as if I would not recommend that, because I think that's a risk we should not take.
And we can't use the stadium's audio because of the reverb and the echo, it's too hard to speak.
Correct.
I've done it, it's very hard.
No, that's, for anybody, you know, especially for kids who aren't, well, even for adults, seasoned speakers, that is very complex to hear yourself speaking. Yeah, that's not fair to them. Correct. So that's why I would not recommend that.
Okay. Now, if people wanted to sit over there and be, you know, behind the, you know...
I guess we could, yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess that could be some sort of overflow if they really felt inclined.
Right.
It's not hurting anything, I suppose.
Those were my only two things I wanted to... So, knowing that we might have that over, I would imagine that we would have that overflow situation, how would we make sure that our families that receive four tickets are on the right spots?
We probably have to have, I think about that, but probably two entrances, maybe.
Okay.
Like a ticket entrance and an overflow entrance or something, something of that sort is kind of what I'm thinking in my mind, because I hadn't thought about that idea before, but I mean, there's nothing lost in letting people sit over there if you're understanding that you're going to be facing the back. So I think we probably have to have two entrances for tickets and non-tickets, which I think we can make work, we just have to get creative.
But the audience will be in the new home section, though, right?
Correct. The audience, the tickets, that the audience were given would be sitting in the home site. Yes, we'll be facing the home bleachers.
And that seats?
2,000.
Okay.
Yes. And that's, I mean, the little bit of difference in this, well, I guess you only have so many of those actual seats, but it says the seats 2,000, and the athletic director feels confident, 2,000.
Okay.
So...
Plus their bleachers.
It is a little bit different.
So you could squeeze on the bleacher part, then, potentially, or in the, yeah, yellow and black.
So each graduate, we got how many tickets now?
Four for sure, and then they'll have to figure out overflows.
Okay. Would we need to run shuttle buses from the new high school down for parking? Is that a feasible option, or too expensive of an option?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I think when we get a complete, we have some rough numbers, and, you know, rough is one thing, but I would like an actual concrete number. Once we get complete, concrete numbers on parking, and then I figure out if I can do one or two passes, if I can do two parking passes a family, then I think it's very reasonable to say, each you get two parking passes, you can use it for your kid or yourselves, or if it's a blended family, you know, work it out yourselves, drop your kid off, your kid can ride the friend, and we can use the overflow lot. I think that would be easier than shuttles.
Okay.
But I need to get an actual concrete number, not a best guess, and that's what we have right now, is a best guess.
Okay.
It's also weather dependent, because...
Well, I know, the grass, too.
If we had rain all the way up until Saturday, the grass area betw... If we had rain all the way up until Saturday, the grass area between, between the middle school and entrance three could be used as it has in the past, but if it's been raining all week up until then, that's.
It's not going to happen.
That's correct, too. So, I think those are some of the logistical things we're going to have to talk about and, and work out. You know, plus we have, remember, we're bringing back the special guests this year, so, which I'm really excited about, and I think that's fantastic for our kids, so, they're going to need a place to be, so there's just a couple of different variables, you know, that we have to figure out. But I, I think we have time to do that, effectively, I just think we need to nail down the location. So, the high school can plan, we have to order more chairs, and just those sort of things.
Woody Hayes would have said, if not me, then who? And I think we can make this happen, so let's go for it. You need a motion, or what are we going to do to make it happen?
I think.
Yeah, we need a motion, Roger.
Yes, we need a motion, Roger.
Okay, I move that we have the primary graduation on the football field, and the secondary would be in the gymnasium at the new high school. And all the things that we've discussed, whatever you need to be in the motion, will be there also.
Okay.
And it'll be on the, the date that we have scheduled, and again, there will have to be some thought going into canceling and moving and all that stuff that we've discussed. That's my motion.
I will second that.
Any more discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Zini?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes, that motion passes. Item five, my thing doesn't scroll, so I assume it's adjourn, adjournment, we need a motion for adjournment.
Motion to get out of here.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Zini?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. That passes.
Goodbye, everybody.